We're live, we're live.
We're kicking off our citizens, or not.
I expect, I expect. Here, this is my personal. Don't be drunk, don't be drunk.
Do it to that one. Got you.
Because it's, it's more fun.
Oh, yes.
Because then, because then, when I try to, if you could tell when I was like, well, it's not, it's not.
I now call to order the August 21st, 2023 meeting of the Post and Planning Commission. Please rise for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation for those who wish to participate will be the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
After the allegiance to the God of the United States of America, and to the God for which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we're going to start with item C, the approval of the minutes. Mr. Hirsch, since you were not a board member at that time, you may abstain from those. We're going to first look at our work session minutes from June 22nd, 2023. Do I have a motion for those minutes?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Geisinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Hirsch?
I abstain.
Okay. Chairman Schott?
Aye.
The motion, I'm sorry, the minutes pass.
The second set of minutes that we will be approving is our regular session minutes from June 22nd, also on the same night. Do I have a motion to approve?
Aye, I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Geisinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Hirsch?
I abstain.
Chairman Schott?
Aye.
The minutes pass.
Thank you. We're going to transition into our audience for visitors. This is a time when any person here may speak at the podium about a matter he or she may wish to address the Planning Commission about. If you are here to speak for one of our public hearings this evening, I would ask that you hold your comments until that time. Anybody to speak? Being done, it is now closed and we will move into our first public hearing under item number E. Item number E, the item number one is request for amendment to the master plan by Lamont Myers for the Legacy of Pecosin to incorporate a .77 acre split parcel owned by the city of Pecosin and identified as tax map parcel 27-12-3 to the Legacy Development. Mr. Horton, would you like to provide the?
Yes, thank you very much. I want to thank all the planning commissioners. Thank you for being here. This is a master plan amendment. I don't see Mr. Myers here, but Mr. Spencer is here, who is the leader of Big Woods Development LLC. So just thought I'd point that one out, buddy. Again, this master plan amendment application was submitted by Lamont Myers. It is requested, as the chairwoman said, for an amendment to the master plan for the Legacy of Pecosin to incorporate a 77 acre split parcel owned by the city, identified as tax map parcel 2712-3 into the Legacy Development. Underlying zone is research and development in Village Community. Of course, it was overlayed zone for plant unit development on August 24th, 2015, which required a master plan at the time. Proposed change requires a master plan amendment because it is a change to the approved master plan. This particular proposal was advertised in the Daily Press on August 7th and August 14th, and adjacent letters were sent to the necessary property owners on August 8th, 2023. I'm not going to read all this, just to simply say that the city council did accept a purchase proposal from the Big Woods Development Company, which is the developer of the Legacy of Pecosin project. Again, 77 acre, .77 acres depicted as the north part of Lot 3 and the south part of Lot 3. So it's bifurcated by Oxford Run, which is why you have that division. And I'll get to the maps here in a minute, and I'll point out exactly what they're planning on doing. Essentially, I'll put some pictures to this, but the 77 acre parcel is going to be used to shift the location of a BMP pond and add four lots. Three of those added lots will be off Waterman's Way, and the other lot will be located on the pond front on Pecosin Path. There are application materials that I have included, and I'll get to those right now. Here's the approved master plan on 8/24/15. Now, it has undergone some changes. I included a legacy timeline of events. You'll note that in 2019, there was a lot of activity in terms of amending this master plan, both the proppers and the buffers and such. Here's where Legacy pretty much is today. Actually, actually, this is outdated. They've done a lot of buildings since then. But you'll notice in the beige part, that is the part that we're talking about tonight, the part that's going to be added. There it is, shown on their sheet 5.0. And you can't really see it here, I didn't do a great job of laying it out here, but essentially, it's where that top pond comes in. I've got some arrows to show that here in just a second. Here's the approved master plan on 8/24/15. You'll notice that the BMP is shoved to the south of the property, and the city of Pecosin Lot is up there to the north of the BMP pond. So this is what they're going to do, what they propose to do should this be approved. The BMP is going to be moved to the north to make room for three lots off Waterman's Way, which you can see number two on that lot, and one lot off Pecosin Path that's going to abut the BMP pond. And that's pretty much it. I mean, it's as simple as that.
Mr. Horton?
Let me, let me get to my recommendations. I'm sorry, I did not point those out. I moved these, so. Of course, granting of this master plan amendment should be approved for necessitated development plan amendment for phases two and three. I can tell you, we've already got those in. All other requirements of the city code and the approved master plan as amended shall be followed. Number three, all applicable federal and state requirements shall be complied with. Four, if this master plan amendment is not approved, the development of Legacy shall proceed in accordance with all previous master plan approvals, and not this proposal. I'll take your questions, I'll be glad to take your questions.
Have any questions for Mr. Horton this evening?
This is at the back end of the Legacy, am I correct?
It's more towards the middle. Let me, let me go back a few steps here. Excuse me, please, but that beige is there. Around that beige area is going to be another phase, phase three, which essentially is going to be behind us here. Phase two has been approved, not, I mean, they've done some clearing, but not anything's really constructed back there yet.
Is there any?
Although if you blink twice, it probably will be.
Is there any plans prior to for the .77 acres?
Well, the .77 on the original master plan was owned by the city and was planned to be maintained by the city. It was not part of the original proposal, which is why we're doing the amendment tonight. Legacy is offered and the city council has approved their offer to buy it after going through a bidding process, which included bids from anybody who was interested, was welcome to bid. But that's the change we're talking about.
No prior use, though, that was considered for this property?
No, it was going to be basically just trees, kind of an open spaces area. Thank you.
Since no other members have additional questions, I'm going to open the public hearing to allow members of the public, as well as the applicant, to speak to the Planning Commission. Do I have anybody that would like to speak? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Comments by planning commissioners this evening about the application that's before you?
No.
No.
Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I recommend that we approve the amendment for the .77 acres to be incorporated in the Legacy of Pecosin.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Geisinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Aye.
Chairman Schott?
Aye.
The recommendation.
Thank you. Item number two on our public hearings tonight is a request for a conditional use permit by NVS Properties 31 LLC for the operation of a private school at 2 Victory Boulevard, tax map parcel 27-01-00-0107, B2 business commercial. Mr. Calo?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, I am presenting for you this evening the CUP request for the operation of a private school at 2 Victory Boulevard. As the chairwoman just read, the applicant is NVS Properties 31 LLC for the use just mentioned. And the city code consideration is that private schools are not permitted by right in the B2 district. Properly advertised for and adjacent letters were sent. About the use, the desired use is to operate a private school for children ages zero to six. One could imagine that the use is similar to a group daycare. However, the compulsory age for education and for child, for children in Virginia is five years old before September 30th of any school year. Seeing as the operation will offer services to children beyond that age, the use is considered a private school. This is the proposed site, one you're all surely familiar with. The aerial image on the left, what we refer to as the old bank building, or one of our old bank buildings, but the former home of Wells Fargo and Wachovia. Of course, Taylor Dental to its south. The picture on the right, I'll mention briefly in just a minute. Here's a list of permitted uses in the B2 district, you've seen it many times. There are similar uses, but none that specifically allow private schools. We do allow preschools, daycare centers, nursery schools, technical vocation, or business schools, and places of worship, including accessory parochial schools, daycare centers, and cemeteries. Permitted use is continued, and this is use is permitted by CUP, of which it is not one. However, we have a practice that any use may apply for a conditional use permit in any zoning district. This is a conceptual subdivision plan, just more so for your viewing pleasure than anything. You can see that on the proposed Lot 1 is the current parking lot of that property. 2 is the current dental office, and these lines are in red on the, on the site plan that was submitted with the application. And then 3 will be the parcel in which the private school will operate. This is the conceptual site plan. I've provided you all a larger copy that I'm sure is easy to look at. It's just flipped a tad from the subdivision, the conceptual subdivision plan you just saw. But you can see there, central to the site plan is the proposed daycare with playground area there in gray. I would also mention that there is an addition proposed to the current building. It is a little hard to see, but you can, you can see it in the plan where vaguely the shadow of the current building is, and you can see where it does and doesn't overlay. We have five, six proposed conditions for you this evening. The first is that the plans for the site shall only be approved once all requirements of the city code are satisfied. The second is that the private school shall only offer enrollment for students from ages zero to six. Before enrollment is offered to children older than six, the applicant shall apply for an amendment to the CUP. The third condition is that the applicant shall provide a traffic impact study to the city engineer in conjunction with site plans emission, and any traffic calming measures shall be agreed to and installed per submitted plans. The fourth is that the use must comply with all state, local, local, state, and federal permits, licenses, regulations, et cetera. The fifth is that if any time specified use on the property is discontinued for a period of two or more years, the permit shall become null and void. And the sixth, of course, is that city council reserves the right to review and amend the conditions of the permit as they see fit. I'm sure you all had a chance to read my staff memo, I won't belabor you with those details anymore. But I also provided to you a traffic generation analysis. That was a trip generation analysis that was provided to us today, actually, for the engineers being contracted by the developer. We've had discussions with them late last week and this morning regarding that and the nature of the traffic impact study that we've included in the third condition. I'll allow them an opportunity to expand upon that a little more. But if you have any questions for me right now, I'm happy to answer them. Yes, sir.
The map that you gave us like this?
Yes, sir.
The 1,200 square feet that you're adding, is it on the top of the building there where you look like classrooms?
It's on the With Creek roadside, the right side of the plan. Really, those last two rooms is where the, where the addition is.
And how about that area below, it looks like parking lot, the red square?
Yes, sir. So the area below, you can see the outline of the, you can see the current Taylor Dental office. So with the site plan, what they're offering is construction of a new parking lot for that use on what would be his new, his new property once the subdivision is approved.
And you can get a two-lane road between dental and Wells Fargo?
Between the two, between the two, the area in gray is daycare, or excuse me, it's a playground area for the, for the students. You can see at the south of the dental office, the arrows, that's the drivelines, and then to its west, there's a driveline for the drive-through restaurant. And then to the north of the daycare center, you can see arrows where it's another driveline.
The, you said that daycares are fine as far as, but is it the six-year-old that's, that changes?
Yes, sir. It is, exactly, because the state code says that the compulsory age for education is five, and being that they want to offer the services to children age six, they're considered a private school, not a daycare.
So would that?
I'll let the applicant expand a little bit upon their services. I can tell you, it's a Montessori-based schooling and daycare service, but I don't want to speculate on their behalf.
Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you.
I'm, I am going to open the public hearing to allow members of the public, as well as applicant, an opportunity to address the Planning Commission. Anybody like to speak this evening? Come on in. Please state your name and address.
My name is Ben Udell and address is 227 West Monroe Street in Chicago, Illinois. I work with Murphy Real Estate Services, representing the applicant, NVS Properties 31.
You can put something from here if you want.
Go ahead.
Sure.
So we prepared a presentation here just to kind of go over who we are, our tenant, and who our team is, really trying to highlight on some of the key questions that you might have. So I'll try and stick to, I know it's the traffic-related issues, and highlight the other stuff as well. So as I mentioned, I'm with Murphy Real Estate. We are the developer of this property, and we work across the country with a group, Global Power Construction. They are our design-build contractor on this project. We also have a representative here from the Sellers Group, and Kim Lee Horn, our civil engineer with us as well. So brief overview on the tenant. Higher Ground Education is the largest private operator of Montessori schools in the United States. They have over 125 schools, mostly across the US, as well as internationally. They offer a typical Montessori-inspired, inspired program, and kind of reflect on the question that was brought up on if it's going to leak in the first grade education or just kind of the pre-K daycare. It is, it's, it is not leaking into the first grade education, it's just daycare. And to be frank, the actual age that it's intended to go through is really five and a half, which is what Guidepost Montessori views and identifies as the pre-K, which will be still a state license, daycare, and education here. Here is a site map of where we are at, as shown earlier. As mentioned, we are applying for the conditional use permit for our daycare facility, which would be a private school here. And the property will consist of roughly 10,900 square feet with a roughly 2,300 square foot addition. We will have 163 children at the facility at full capacity, up to 22 employees at one given time on site. We plan to provide 47 parking spaces, and the facility will be open from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Total staff, as mentioned, is 22, or total staff is 31, but a maximum is 22. And I'll back into kind of our traffic analysis, pick-up and drop-off on a later slide. One other thing worth mentioning is the relationship that our tenant, Higher Ground Education, has with the DOD. Higher Ground has been working with Colonel Hung within the DOD to establish relationships since they have a long waitlist and large need for more childcare in the area. So Higher Ground is working with the DOD to, to fill up, fill up their waitlist with DOD families, and that'll be subsidized through the government. Here is our site plan design as we went over earlier, and our floor plan. One other thing worth mentioning on our site plan is, we did realize, if you notice in the top right where we are adding the new building addition, the east end of the building goes slightly over the setback requirements, so we are going to bring that in, so that will not be a problem going forward. Here's just some, some of our typical site signage and what that looks like, and site fencing, all of which is mandated by local building code and state licensing code for daycare facilities. And here is our traffic pattern slide, so. To dive into this, a lot of times, people think of daycare, childcare centers, and they think that the pick-up and drop-off patterns are going to be similar to a public school, which actually is not the case. So for a public school, there's a lot of, there's, there's pick-up and drop-off lines, a lot of stacking. That is not the case here, since the, the way that it, the way that it works is parents pull in, they have to park the car, walk their kid into the center, check them in, and then they leave. So there's no sort of stacking, it's all within the parking spaces. And as you can see during the peak, peak drop-off time, which would be 8:15, 8:45, at most, 16% of students are dropped off at one time. And then in the afternoon, you could see at most 15% are picked up, with the busiest time range kind of being from 5:00 to 5:45. And this data comes from the database of over 125 schools across the country. Higher Ground, Higher Ground keeps track of this, we keep track of this, knowing that it's oftentimes an important topic when going in for approvals and making sure that we have adequate parking on site. So with the 163 kids and 22 staff members at one time, at most during the busiest pick-up and drop-off time, you have 13, oh, I said occupied. I meant to say 13 unoccupied spaces. So it's going to be at, at 30, 34 spaces will be occupied at most, based on the data that we have from every other school across the country. So we do believe we have very adequate parking on site, more than enough, and this is at a full-capacity school.
How many spaces do you have, I'm sorry, total?
We have 47 parking spaces. And then here are just some design examples from other schools we've done. And we'd also like to, as Thomas mentioned, we'd also like to propose an amendment to condition number three. I know we sent the exact language earlier in the day, but we'd like to amend it so that we do not have to provide a traffic study, as long as we provide a trip generation analysis, along with our site plans in the middle. And the goal would be for this analysis to back up the fact that the new use of the daycare and private school use will have less trips generated than the current or prior use of the drive-through bank.
So going to use the one entrance off of Pecosin Avenue, or 171?
Yes, we will. There's going to be a, so there's going to be parking, well, we will have parking to the, to the north and east. Our dedicated entrance is off of With Creek, but it's also a shared entrance on the southwest of the property.
That's to the building, right? I'm talking about in, in, in progress for the traffic. I'm talking about in an ingress for the traffic coming into the school is, is only one that I know of, and that's off of With, Pecoson Avenue, not With Creek, for cars to enter.
The entrance is on the northeast off of With Creek.
I, I think, Ben, what?
Is that where the drive-through was?
Yes, sir. What, what it's showing is the entrance, the entrance that was used for the drive-through to the bank, and then you can see, I'll say to the southwest of the site plan, the entrance from Victory.
Okay. Makes you feel a lot better. Forgot about the drive-through.
And there's shared access easements and everything that'll be in place for ingress and egress across the, through to the west of the site and everything.
Ben, how do you spell your last name?
U-D-E-L-L.
Thank you.
Thomas, did you want to elaborate on what the applicant has proposed and what the amendment?
Yes, ma'am. You'll see that the third condition offered by staff, it reads, "The applicant shall provide a traffic impact study to the city engineer in conjunction with site plan submission, and any traffic calming measures shall be agreed to and installed per submitted plans." The amendment that the applicant is offering will, will read, "The applicant shall provide trip generation values associated with the daycare peak hours in conjunction with site plan submission," which is basically the, the memo from Kim Lee Horn that you have at your places. Had a chance to look this over, and, and more importantly, the city engineer had a chance to look it over, and staff is amenable to the, to the amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak at our public hearing today regarding this application? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any of the planning commissioners have anything?
I was concerned at first that everybody would use the Pecoson Avenue, but with the drive-through lane and stuff like that, the access, there's more than one, so you're not tying up.
Right.
Because that's a busy intersection right there.
It is.
It's our main intersection.
Exactly.
So with that, I don't, don't have any problems at all with the traffic flow.
So that the resolution, based on what Thomas's recommendation is, based on the traffic study, would be, if planning commission so desires, it would be approved as amendment with the additional language and verbiage that is specified.
Is that written up in the?
Well, yes, sir. Well, I have, I do have the language that was provided. I can read it again if you'd like, but it'll be a substitute to the third condition. If you'd like me to read it again, I can.
Oh, it's all right.
Okay.
Just want to make sure that when we approve it that it's?
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll amend the resolution if approved to reflect what, what you recommend for approval to city council.
Can you tell me what the status of the proposed Starbucks development adjacent to this is?
Sure.
That is?
The status is that it's, it's been shown on, on this conceptual site plan, basically for what we'll call the overall site. Beyond this, we have received some architectural renderings of, of their proposed elevations. We had them on schedule to go to the architectural review board next month. They asked that the application be put on hold until a later date so that they could take their elevations for the Starbucks to the architectural review board, at the same time the folks from Higher Ground take their exterior elevations to the architectural review board. Other than, than those two, two things, that's, that's what we have right now.
With regards to the traffic, I, I see that there's a, the trip generation study, but I suppose that some of the other uses adjacent to the old bank are not different, and so I wonder maybe a deeper study might be warranted to evaluate the impact of the other changes that have taken place.
I think.
Or if that's been considered in any way already.
I think that may be a question that are addressed for the applicant, if, if any of you'd like to address it.
Hi, my name is Josh Naughton with Frontier Development. We're the owner of the, the bank parking lot there, and also the Starbucks proposal, so are you, are you talking about the, the adjacent properties on the other side of where the Starbucks would be?
Correct, to the west. I mean, I'm talking about the, the Starbucks itself and whatever traffic that would generate. Question was about the proposed use and what the status of that was.
Yeah, right, right now, we're, as Thomas mentioned, we're working with Starbucks through the, through their internal process. We were hoping to get through the CUP here tonight with Higher Ground, and then also the ARB proposal next, so we're just kind of stepping through the process with them slowly, make sure this all comes together at the same time, so I don't know if the trip generation would be separate, is that what you're asking about, if we would come in separately with them, or as opposed to the CUP right now?
I think, if, if you want to answer, you certainly can.
My question was really just wondering whether a traffic impact study might still be warranted, and I'm just trying to help.
We, we haven't received one yet for the Starbucks, but we do have some, some language in the site plan ordinance that, that speaks to, of course, traffic circulation, and basically being able to display in accordance with the site plan that circulation affected to adjacent properties.
That'll happen as a, as a process of that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
What's the timeline? I mean, how, how long will the?
Yeah, we're, we're hoping to come through the ARB this following next month, and then hopefully bring the site plans in either kind of at the same time or right after that for the Starbucks, so hopefully in the next 60 days, 90 days at the most.
I think the question, if I understood it correctly, was more so about your, your construction timeline once, once it begins for the uses.
Once everything's fully approved, all of these, so we're not speaking for Higher Ground, I think the Starbucks would be early spring next year, assuming, again, all, all approvals come through, we'd probably be in May, around in there to break ground.
Thomas, did we receive any type of correspondence, say, for Taylor Dental Care or any adjacent property owners with, starting the application?
We did receive correspondence from Dr. Taylor, and he indicated that, that he was okay with, with the submission.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't see any problems with the application, and I think that the daycare center, Montessori school type thing is well-needed in the city, and will serve a good purpose, and I think I've heard a lot of the details that I was concerned with, such as access and stuff like that, so I'll go ahead and approve, or make a motion that we approve, and with the amendment that Thomas is going to modify for number three.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Geisinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Aye.
Chairman Shaw?
Aye.
The recommendation passes. Thank you. Next, we're going to move to communications and correspondence on our agenda, from staff.
I've got two things. One is, next month, we'll need to have a work session again as we tackle the commercial districts of the zoning rewrite, and also the conditional zoning, Article Two, which we waited on for a while. So we'll need a work session next month. Further down the road, Thomas and I have been talking about comprehensive plan. We want to get in front of you guys, you guys, the planning commission, by November, or October, rather, to see if there's anything we need to tweak. Now, keep in mind, the comprehensive plan, it's only five years old. We had talked at one time, Thomas and I, about updating the population, but it might be advisable to wait till the legacy gets built out, and Darden Road gets built out, and Quarter Creek gets built out, to, to really dwell into that, but we will be in front of you probably in two months. Work session next month, I would say probably about 6:15 maybe?
What was the recommendation, 6:15 start?
6:15.
That's.
The only thing I have, Madam Chair, is currently, and thank you for serving as the chair tonight, Vice Chair Shriver did ask that the election of officers come off of tonight's agenda for what, which it was originally planned, so that will be on next month's agenda. That meeting will be September 18th, so we'll have a 6:15 work session and a 7:00 regular session. Regular session may be pretty short, we didn't receive any applications that warrant a public hearing. Other than that, I do want to note, I'm going to provide you all with a copy of the city's master infrastructure plan tonight. As all of you are aware, that, that marries our budget with our CCIP and our comprehensive plan, and we'll take a look at it as we look at the comp plan, so I want to give you all a copy of that so that you can thumb through it over the next couple of months.
Thank you. I have no additional business this evening, so thank you all for coming in the audience. Do I have a motion to adjourn, adjourn the meeting?
Yes, I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Geisinger?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Chairman Shaw?
Aye.
All right, motion to adjourn at 7:42. Thank you. We are now adjourned. Thank you for coming.